Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, April 18th. Roll call please. Councilmember Costa.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Disney.
Here.
Pro Tem Froyo.
Here.
And Mayor Matina.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Could we have our star quarterback Jake Soderquist lead us tonight? Acceptance of the agenda. Do we have any urgency items?
We do not.
So the, the only thing, um, I think some of our football players are still playing a baseball game. Um, so we might push that item ahead, um, if it's okay with council and.
You mean back?
Back. And move up the fireworks discussion.
Oh, yeah.
If that's okay, we'll take a motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'd move for the approval of the agenda with the, um, changes recommended by the mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Wave reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of April 4th. Approve the application 2023-010 with staff recommendations for the 2023 Memorial Day Parade. Approve the application 2023-011 with staff recommendations for the NorCal air-cooled VW car show to be held on Park Street. And approve the application 2023-012 with staff recommendations for the 2023 Tuesday Farmer's Market in Library Park. Would any council members like to pull any of those items? Anyone from the public? Do we have anyone online? All right, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'd, um, ask for approval of the consent agenda.
So I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is public input. Any person may speak for three minutes about any subject within the authority of the city council, provided that it's not on the above agenda. Do we have anyone from the public tonight? Come on up.
Can I, um, it's just a suggestion.
Come on up and give us your name.
Okay, I'm Dana Bastian. And, um, I just have a suggestion, just because every time I drive by this place in Lakeport, it makes me think of an accident that could possibly happen. And I have pictures of what I'm talking about, but I'll just read what I wrote up and then you can, if you want to look at it.
Okay.
And I have to put my name down? No, I don't have to do that.
Um, I think we got, we've got your name for the record.
Okay. Um, I'm here to suggest a possible road change or maybe a lighted sign to prevent someone from being killed. The road I'm speaking of is North High Street and Clearlake Avenue intersection. A person not familiar to Lakeport, possibly driving at night, could make the easy mistake of causing a head-on crash. I know there are already signs there that say do not enter. Even the idea to make it a two-way road like it was years before, or some flashing red lights. Um, I imagine a poor soul sitting at the stop sign and some person flying at a high-speed crashes straight into them. That's all.
Okay.
Do you want to look at this or not?
Is that for us to keep or?
Yeah.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
If you want to.
Bureau grab it.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me talk.
Anytime. Thanks for coming in. Anyone else from the public?
Hello, guys. It's me, it's Yurzika, and I'm a hawk, your favorite act members. Um, we know it's been a while, but we're back. We've been keeping up with all of the agendas. And today we're here to express our thoughts on the firework topic on the agenda today. I'd like to start off by letting everyone know there's.
Nancy, so on that one, you're going to want to wait for that item.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't worry, we have more though.
Okay, so skip to the good stuff and then come up when we get to that item. Okay?
Okay. Okay, um, on a different note, we are continuing to do nonprofit activities in Lakeport. This next one specifically for CLHS, we are doing a recyclables drive in honor of birthday. We have two prizes sponsored by local businesses such as Jimmy's and Renee's Cafe. For the rest of this week, we will be having students bring us recycling. The top two students with the most recycling will win our prizes. From there, we will be donating all the recyclables to Mrs. Stillman, our special education teacher. She will use the money from turning in all of our gathering for her life skills class, specifically the cooking curriculum. In the end, we hope to help out our environment, our school, and our community. Thank you so much for your time. And as usual, the support you all give us to continue to grow and give.
And then if you guys have any questions about it, we'll be happy to answer.
All right. Any questions?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, girls. Anyone else from the public? You guys are all here. Now's your chance. If there's anything we should know. All right, do we have anyone online?
None online.
All right, so we're up to our presentation. Kristin, what's our ETA? Okay, so we are going to move on to city council business, safe and sane fireworks discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable members of the council. Good evening. Um, if you'll recall, uh, I believe last fall, uh, this was, uh, I think during our, our ops area or our, um, or just our after-action report for the Fourth of July fireworks, uh, there was a request at that time, uh, by then councilmember Green and then supported by, uh, you know, majority of your council to look at placing, uh, this discussion, uh, again on a future council item. Uh, so the item is, uh, regarding the current state of safe and sane fireworks in the city of Lakeport. Uh, so the memo that was provided to you in your staff report just kind of provides a rough background of information, um, in regards to the, the history of safe and sane fireworks in the city of Lakeport. Um, you know, beginning in 2009 with a voter-approved Measure C, uh, which, uh, adopted the current provision, uh, that allows for the sale of safe and sane fireworks within the city. Um, we have had several complaints, uh, you know, annually, especially as, um, you know, we've, we've dealt with, uh, various wildfire in the county over the past decade. Um, and because of that, we've, uh, kind of tried to address some of those issues, uh, by doing a number of things, placement of signs at the city limits, uh, warning that fireworks are illegal beyond the city limits, or requiring the sellers to provide each purchaser with a written notice that the fireworks are to remain within the city of Lakeport. Um, aggressive communication across, uh, various city, um, media platforms and the like, but, uh, you know, it's, it's still a continual battle. Uh, you know, as it, it is very easy to take those outside the city limits. Uh, but the purpose of this discussion this night is to really kind of provide the background and the platform. Um, and kind of the, the main piece is that, uh, the council does not have the ability to make changes to Measure C as it is. It's a voter-approved, um, measure and therefore it would be require voter approval for any, uh, amendment to it, whether it be to rescind it or to, to make simple amendments to it. Any action of change would require, uh, voter approval by the citizens of Lakeport. So this evening is really just to meant to kind of provide that discussion at, uh, you know, that platform, that ability to hear from the public. Um, you know, it has been some time since this has been approved. Going back to 2009, quite a bit has changed. Uh, we've had, you know, a number of, uh, large-scale wildfires in that time period, uh, to devastating effect. Um, but I mean, I think ultimately, uh, the, the main thing here is to kind of provide that opportunity to, to educate the public that, you know, this is not something that the council has the ability to make changes to without, uh, going through a voter-initiated process. So with that, I'll turn it back over. Uh, your staff is more than available to answer any additional questions regarding the operations. I believe, um, uh, there's some supplemental material that was provided, um, to your council, uh, from, from, uh, Mr. Revel with TNT fireworks, uh, regarding some of the efforts that they have, uh, been engaged in, uh, and moving forward. Uh, but mainly this was an opportunity to hear from the public and to, uh, to take direction, if any, from, uh, from your council.
That's it. Great. All right. Any questions from council before we open it up?
Yep. I'm wondering if we have any input from any of our, um, like our fire chief. Uh, any one related to fire suppression and protection on this issue?
We, we did contact, uh, the fire chief in there. And I mean, the, the fire department has definitely been a close ally, uh, to us throughout these, uh, the processes. I believe, I don't know, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, was it last year or the year before? Uh, we did establish sort of a special operations unit with the fire department, uh, for some more aggressive enforcement. Unfortunately, staffing has, has limited that in, in other years. Um, but they've been a very close partner with us in, in kind of the enforcement and, and operations of, uh, there. But outside of that, um, I haven't heard any additional input.
Anyone else?
Well, I did, um, go to the fire station and talk with two different, um, captains, two different shifts. Um, just out of curiosity, I also talked to Chief Rasmussen. Um, from the fire perspective, they said that the safe and sane fireworks have been zero issue as far as starting fires. My original assumption was that fireworks, of course, start wildfires. Um, I talked to a couple on staff there that have been there for over 30 years and they can't think of a single major wildfire that was started due to these fireworks. So there's a little input there.
Good info. All right, well, go ahead and open it up to the public. Um, do we have anyone online?
Nobody online.
Okay, anyone from the public?
Hands up.
Hello, me again. Um, anyways, back to where I was. I'd like to start off by letting everyone know that there's been one single fire caused by safe and sane fireworks. It was a fire that started in a trash can and it was contained in a trash can. Although this was the only fire started by safe and sane fireworks around the lake, I know, and we've taken into consideration the catastrophic wildfires our community has dealt with. But banning fireworks or creating more rules for them isn't going to stop our wildfires. We've even had fires start from lawn mowers, which is something I don't think has ever been a discussion to get rid of. Especially with the drought we've faced and the overly dry lands surrounding Lake County, fires were nothing we could avoid. Another thing to take into consideration is that selling fireworks is a big fundraiser for a lot of programs, especially at my school, Clearlake High School. On top of that, not having safe and sane fireworks will only cause dumb teens and dumb adults to bring illegal and actually dangerous fireworks into our county. Because of these facts, myself and the members of all children's thrive, don't think Lake County will thrive with too many rules against fireworks. Therefore, we support the decision of keeping safe and sane fireworks in our area. And we just wanted to share that with you guys today. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Hey, Mary.
My name is Mary Benson. I serve as the secretary for the Lake County Realtors Scholarship and Community Fund. And every year we give out in excess of $20,000 in scholarships to graduating seniors who are going on to get vocational degrees, technical degrees, or, um, a, a regular two-year or four-year college. Last year, we gave out $27,000 in scholarships and 13,000 of that directly came from fireworks sales. So I've got to say that as much as I am surprised personally to be speaking in favor of fireworks, because I don't use them and I don't really like loud noises, nor do my dogs. But I do think that it provides a community service to our community and people are going to seek them out anyway. Just as prohibition of alcohol didn't stop people from drinking, I don't think the prohibition of fireworks, especially safe and sane fireworks, is going to help stop the issue of fireworks being used. I also believe that, um, during regular prohibition of alcohol, the smugglers turn to smuggling spirits instead of beer and wine, because if they're going to risk everything, they're going to go for the big stuff. And I can't imagine people who are going to bring illegal fireworks into our area smuggling sparklers and smokeballs and the kinds of things that we sell at our booth. I think they're going to go for the big stuff. And I think it's going to just improve the, um, the black market that already has existed. Now, I do understand that TNT, um, their public relations person has suggested a higher sales tax and that we use that money to hire a private security firm that can do documentation of the use of illegal fireworks. And I strongly support that and so does our board. So that's what I would like to see you, um, do. I, we are very sensitive to the issue of the wildfires and how many houses have been lost in the last seven years since they started. But we really don't think that banning the safe and sane fireworks is going to do anything. So please, let's be safe and sane here and realize that people are going to use them anyway. So let's try to feed them the milder stuff. Thank you.
Hi, George.
Hello, good evening. Uh, George Spur, for those who don't know me. Basically, uh, all that the lady said there is true and it's, it's good to have the same and same fireworks. Um, the other reason for fireworks in my mind is to celebrate the veterans and the freedom of the country. And to take that into consideration, uh, the Vietnam, Vietnam War, which my brother was graciously invited to join, uh, by Uncle Sam, uh, we lost over 45,000 people killed in action. And out of that, 5,500 of them came from the state of California. So we're talking about everybody in this town dying in Vietnam. And so basically, I see the fireworks as a way to honor these people who have fought art for our country. And like the lady says, if you're not going to have the safe and sane ones, people will go to Nevada and get the other ones. And as far as the fires are concerned, uh, up to my knowledge, there was zero, but the other person said that there was one in a trash can. But we, when I was on council, we had all the chiefs check this out and it was zero from safe and sane fireworks. So I hope you don't ask to ban them.
Thanks, George. Ooh, we have a line forming.
Hello, uh, my name's James. Uh, this is my first year on the board for the Lake County Channel Cats. I am part, I am the, uh, firework coordinator. So this kind of all hit me last minute at work. Uh, but I'm here to, uh, show my support in the sale of these fireworks. Like it has been said, um, yes, it's easy to take them out of the city of Lakeport, but I live in Nice. And, uh, these fireworks that are going off outside the city of Lakeports, they're blowing up in the sky. They're blowing up on the ground. Safe inside, safe and sane fireworks do not go in the sky. They do not blow up. Um, there's stores that line the border of California in Nevada and counties that are not allowed to use fireworks, but are allowed to legally sell them. One store has openly admitted to paying over a million dollars in sales taxes at 6.7%. That's one store. The majority of these fireworks are coming into California. They know this because these stores keep records of who's buying them with licenses. And it's not just Lake County where safe and sane is not causing issues. Um, Safe and Sane launches an investigation into every single fire and firework injury around the Fourth of July holiday in the state of California. Safe and sane fireworks are not the problem. It's illegal fireworks. They're gonna come in anyways. Um, over the last 53 years, our county has benefited, nonprofit sports teams, swim teams have benefited $53 million, no, $2 million in the last 53 years. I'm sorry. But I mean, that, that pays for, that's paying what we need. Um, it cost us about $22,000 to rent a pool from May to October. Uh, we need these fireworks sales. Um, thank you.
Thanks, James. Hey, Michael.
This won't be awkward. How are you doing? Michael Green.
Should I start the timer?
Would you know him? Yeah, you're the timer. Michael Green, uh, County Board of Supervisors, recovering city council person. And as you recall, when I was on the city council, I was strongly opposed to the sale of fireworks in the city of Lakeport. My personal opinion has not changed. If anything, it is made doubly, uh, strong by my current position in which I have to represent not just people who live here within the city limits of Lakeport, but people who live just outside the city limits where fireworks are prohibited. Fireworks are prohibited throughout the county of Lake, except for the city of Lakeport. It is an outlier and it is an outlier, not just in terms of county policy, but most of the counties around Northern California, where our fire risk has, uh, accelerated in recent years, where we have experienced mega fires that do not behave like traditional fires, where resources have been stretched so thin that, uh, even if we think our local fire agencies have the wherewithal to do it, we have no guarantee they're going to be here when the fire breaks out. I have witnessed fires, uh, created by safe and sane fireworks right there on the Fourth Street parking lot. Yes, it was a trash can fire, but was anybody there to put it out immediately? Nobody was. Uh, were parents adequately supervising their children? Not all of them, no. And who was there to take care of that? There are liability issues that go with the Fourth of July thing. And to those who say illegal fireworks are a problem, absolutely. And guess where those illegal fireworks come on the Fourth of July? They come right here to the city of Lakeport and we give them cover. We give them effective cover with everyone blowing off their safe and sane fireworks that we have illegal fireworks causing problems. And you can't spot them and say, oh, that's safe and sane and that's illegal and I have to put my enforcement resources over there. I've spoken with Chief Rasmussen about this. I'm going to keep speaking about it. We don't have enough people. We don't have enough police. We don't have enough fire. We don't even have enough volunteers to monitor what's going on when the entire city is blowing off safe and sane fireworks, either here at the park or out in our neighborhoods, driving around. And yes, it is an attractive nuisance, because when the fireworks are blowing off here in the city of Lakeport, Kelseyville comes on down, the North Shore comes on down. And while you're sitting there waving your sparklers, look around the lake and look at all the illegal fireworks getting blown off around there. So not only are you an attractive nuisance by allowing this continued, uh, use of safe and sane fireworks, some of those safe and sane fireworks are getting out to the county and being used in places where they are absolutely illegal. And it is not fair to say, oh, we haven't started a major wildfire yet, because that's the operative word. It's yet. And the fact that this is an important fundraiser does not absolve our civic groups from taking responsibility. You know, how many Girl Scout cookies have started a wildfire? None. All right, so I understand this is an important subject. I understand our community groups draw a lot of funds from this. But we have been through how many major wildfires in the last decade? How many of us still are triggered by these wildfires? We cannot have it both ways. We can either have a uniform, consistent, sensible policy in the county of Lake and its cities, where we give proper respect to the terrain we live in, which is very susceptible to wildfire. We can't turn around and just say, okay, one day a week, we're just going to go nuts. One, one day a year, it's going to be safe and sane. We're going to sell fireworks legally here for four days. We're going to make a bunch of money, much more than the Girl Scouts ever could. It's not fair. It's not fair. So do what you want to do. Celebrate your freedoms in any way you wish. Don't endanger other people while you're doing it. Don't endanger other communities while you're doing it. And if you want a good model ordinance, take a look at, County of Lake has one. We last updated it in 2016. Thank you.
Anyone else? Heidi.
So my name is Heidi Johnson. I'm the president of the Lake County Realtors Scholarship Committee. I'm also past president of our local board and, um, I kind of think I have my finger on the pulse. And they talked a lot about the money that these fundraisers make. Um, I know a lot of you personally in here, their children have received scholarships from us, but we want to talk about the American tradition and what it brings to this community. You guys said the pledge of allegiance. I was like, yes, this is America. We say the pledge of allegiance. We celebrate with fireworks and sparklers on the Fourth of July. Not only do people come here to purchase fireworks, they come here to solicit and purchase and spread their money throughout this community. People come here, they rent our hotels, they eat in our restaurants, and that is what we need for our community, is to come here and boost this economy. I don't want to be seeing our names in the magazines as we're the poorest county anymore. I'm tired of it. We can do it. We can bring the money back in. We're getting really nice places to stay. The lake is full. Um, I'm expecting this to be a good year and I just want to say, please, um, keep it off the ballot. We really enjoy, um, celebrating America on top of money and giving back. It's like a, a one, two, three punch for all of us and everybody wins. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Pars. Um, I'm actually representing the Clearlake High School Booster Club. I'm not representing the district, just to be clear. Um, I happen to have the opportunity to not just be an employee of the, uh, Lakeport Unified School District, but I'm also a parent. Um, and this year, um, a group of parents, um, wave if you guys, um, are Booster Club people, please. I just a few, a few of them are here. Um, we reinstated the Clearlake High School Booster Club this year after, um, it being completely dissolved, um, as a result of COVID and a result of just, uh, turnover with membership. And this is, um, the fireworks are, um, Lakeport Unified's number one fundraiser for student, um, activities. Um, it's part of, uh, what we do to make sure that all these football players and these baseball players and the band members, et cetera, um, have the extra funding that they need to be able to continue with the, um, extracurricular activities that we're able to provide them. Um, we share the money back with the school. It doesn't benefit any of us in the Booster Club to have that money in our account. We're just waiting for the students to, um, help direct us in the, the, um, to, to help us navigate what the needs are of, of the school. And, um, it would be a real shame to take more away from the youth than we already are limited with what we're able to offer in a rural community.
Thanks, Rachel. Anyone else from the public? Chief, did you want to say something?
Uh, we, we have one online.
We do?
Yes. Uh, Dennis Revel.
Okay, go ahead, Dennis.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Dennis Revel, uh, appearing on behalf of our client TNT fireworks. Um, I appreciate the comments of the supervisor and I respect his, uh, personal position. Um, but I would note that when Measure C was adopted by the residents and voters of Lakeport, they put in place a much tougher ordinance than the, uh, county has. And that ordinance has much higher fines than, uh, the county has. And it requires a operation plan in advance of the Fourth of July and an after-action report after the Fourth of July on the success or failure of the operation plan. That does not exist in the county, regrettably. Um, it goes without saying that, uh, the problems that jurisdictions throughout California are experiencing, are, they're experiencing with illegal fireworks, not safe and sane fireworks in virtually every community across California. As recently as, um, March 26th, the city of Los Angeles had a 45-minute, two-block display of illegal fireworks that the LA Police Department and Fire Department could not stop. That is the city with the largest police department, with the most sophisticated police department, uh, that exists, uh, in this state and they couldn't stop it. It has reached epidemic proportions. And that is why TNT fireworks, CalFire, the State Fire Marshal, um, CalChiefs, uh, Department of Toxic Substance Control and a host of other stakeholders are working, uh, to get, uh, AB 1403 adopted and to find and refine a solution to putting to stop to the supply chain of illegal fireworks in California. The question before you tonight in terms of what options that there are other than putting it on the ballot. Number one, there is no rush to put it on the ballot unless you're going to do a special election. You have until the presidential primary is the first opportunity to, to do that. And probably the most cost-effective one is the presidential primary. The, so given everything, rather than focusing on whether it should be on the ballot. My email to you yesterday was to suggest we focus on making this coming Fourth of July as safe as possible. And to try an option that one city has successfully employed in Southern California. And I think could be employed, employed in Lakeport and we certainly are willing to help fund that. Program to see if it can work. And, and uh that I, as I laid out in my email to you. Uh, would be putting two one-person patrols on duty. From seven PM to three AM. Those are the time periods picked by Chief Rasmussen that he felt would be most helpful to him. And thereby deploying basically evidence gathering. Uh, um personnel out into the areas where um illegal fireworks are being used. And filing the necessary reports, both uh under your social host provision in the Measure C ordinance. A- as well as um any criminal citations. Collecting the evidence so the police department can issue those administrative citations or make the necessary arrests based upon the documentation gathered by. The private security firm. This has worked in, in a city that is um three times your size. Uh, and certainly, um, I, I think it, it bears worth trying as well as exploring other options. The, regrettably, the situation you find yourself in is because of the popularity of your uh Fourth of July festival. All the city resources are concentrated at Lakeside. Uh, uh, you know, at Lakeside and in the park. And as a consequence, the neighborhoods. Um, and there's not enough personnel to document or respond to those problems. That will exist. Whether we, whether state approved fireworks are in Lakeport in twenty twenty four or not. And therefore I'm suggesting that we uh collectively work to. Uh, try and map out a solution that will work for the community this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I apologize uh for being tardy and uh if I repeat uh what our earlier comments were made, I. Apologize as well. I was graduating three recruits from our volunteer recruit academy. I have an important time for us, so.
Good.
Uh, let's, let's be clear. We're talking about safe and sane versus illegal fireworks. And um, let's not confuse the two. And responsible use, whether they're safe and sane or whether they're illegal. Is really where the problem lies. And what the city has already in place is one of the proven techniques. That we know works. Whether you're supplying safe and sane or illegal fireworks by definition by California code. So those locations that have designated areas for. Display and detonation. I don't like that word too much because it involves explosion, but. Control, areas of control. Those areas have been, have been proven to have less incidents. Of injury or escape, if you will. Let's face it, it's California and I don't care that it's a wet year this year because next year may not be. And we're talking about a go forward effort, not necessarily what has happened in the past. I've worked with the chief. We've talked plans. We've talked experiences. What works, what doesn't work, what can we do to, to improve in the future? And. The benefits that it brings to Lakeport with tourism. Increased expenditures for our nonprofits, which result in increased revenues for our nonprofits, which were, go back where? Back into our community. It's cyclic. The official stance of, of a fire official is we would love to see all of this just go away. But the reality of it is it's not going to. And we need to provide and take advantage of those opportunities that we have in front of us. In other words, bolstering. Using, using this op- opportunity to educate, to keep people safe. At the same time, we're benefiting our community as a whole because it brings people to our community. It allows people to spend their money and generate revenue for our nonprofits, to go back into our community, to go back to our kids. And that's what we're trying to do here is to do that as safe and as responsible as we possibly can. I can only speak for my agency and I can speak to my experience. And by having the control areas where we are allowing for the display. And the use of these. Safe and sane fireworks while putting this, the kibosh on all of our illegals. Cracking down, cracking down hard and letting people know that isn't acceptable here. That isn't. Behavior we want here. It's not going to be tolerated here. And that's where the NARCA neighbor program comes in, as I like to call it. And relying on each other to keep our community safe. And explaining to the rest of the world, this is how it's done right. And this is what's going to happen to you if you don't want to play by our rules. Fire Department stands ready to be a part of the safe and sane. To be a part with our partner agencies. To be a part of our community. Whichever direction is, is taken. But let's make sure that we're keeping our roles straight and we're keeping our definition straight and what it is we're trying to accomplish here. I'll take any questions. Otherwise I'll go take my seat.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll start with one. Uh, how is it that you differentiate when a family is using both legal and illegal fireworks?
Uh, the illegal.
How, how is that? How is that when it starts out being that the young kiddies are using them? Earlier in the evening and someone else, the uncle from the family shows up with something that they're not supposed to have.
Then.
It grows.
We, we, you shut it down, you shut it down immediately. And that, that's, that's the best and fa- best answer that any of us can give.
I've got three houses in my neighborhood that do it annually and I haven't taken a stand on this, but I'm just telling you, I've got three houses that do it annually. And it hasn't been taken down yet.
Well, I will tell you that uh in my experience with illegal fireworks. Is typically they're coming from, and I'm not speaking for. Lakeport, I'm just speaking in generalities. They're always coming in from outside. They're generally sold by folks who don't give a hoot about the community and they're only out to make a buck for themselves. They don't care about safety, but I will tell you, there are certain places that do sell what are classified as illegal fireworks in the state of California. Outside the state of California and they designate areas for the people to detonate them safely with supervision. But that's not an option in California because we don't allow those types of fireworks. So we only, and, and to say we're going to crack down. How do you crack down on the importation of fireworks when they're in somebody's trunk coming back across the state lines? We don't, we, we live in a free country. I get stopped at the border for uh. To, to make sure I'm not bringing in oranges from someplace else, but you know, they don't inspect me. They take my word and wave me on through. But so how do we, how do we control that? The only way we can control it is when. Immediately when it happens. So. Are we as, and I, I would have to defer to the chief and to your prosecuting attorney. If you are filming your neighbors and we have license plates, we have. Clear identification with faces that we can actually, yep, these are the individuals. Are we going to prosecute on that? I can't speak to that. That's not my, that's not my jurisdiction. But it was, it would be something that you need to have a conversation with either as a neighbor or as an official. With. The prosecuting attorney and with your police chief or your sheriff. To have those conversations, but even if we, even if tonight we take a vote and we go, we're not going to have any fireworks in the city. You're going to have a bigger problem than what you had on your hands before because now all fireworks are illegal in the city. And yet people are still going to go and buy them at Walmart in Ukiah or. Williams or wherever and bring them here to set them off.
I'll just say that this is open for discussion tonight and I, I appreciate that everybody's in here and there's a lot of passion in the room and we're all. Americans here and we love the Fourth of July and fireworks. No one once has mentioned that the city puts on quite a firework display themselves. And they create areas near the, near the water to be able to blow off safe and sane fireworks. And yet still. We can't stop the illegal fireworks that go on within the, the areas that are within our park. That's one. I just.
Do you want to say it?
No, 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 please let me finish.
Absolutely.
What we're here tonight to do is to open a discussion and talk about this, but we're not taking a vote tonight. We're talking about an open discussion and we have a, a very small representation of the city here. And it's nice to hear everybody come out with, with, you know, everybody deserves the right to be able to come out and speak about this, but by putting it on the ballot. It allows anybody that is registered to vote to be able to put their vote in. So that is what's up for consideration tonight. We're not banning it tonight.
No, I understand that. I was using, I was being a little bit facetious when I said that. And, and I know that. The chief and I have had the, the idea of, okay, do we set up a, a secure perimeter into those, into those safe areas? For display and we inspect every bag that comes in. And we pull out the illegal stuff and we have a container there to dispose of it immediately. So it doesn't take place in those areas. That, that is one, that is one approach. But stopping it immediately is, is, is. Really what we have in our, the option in front of us right.
I'll give you one last scenario. When I go to bed at approximately eleven PM and I don't want to get up and go check on my neighbors. And they're shooting off the illegal stuff, the big stuff. Who's gonna, who's gonna check them to make sure that they're not, that they don't have that, those fireworks or? How, how is it that we're going to tell the difference when the same families start out with the safe and sane fireworks and there's a mixture of both?
But banning fireworks. Just makes all fireworks illegal. It, I mean, that's, that's, and, and so they're still going to detonate.
All illegal. We put on a display.
Off track because it's really not for us to ban. So Measure C was adopted by the voters in two thousand nine and this comes up every Fourth of July. Of why did the city council let fireworks happen? Why are they selling fireworks? Well, we, it's not up to us. The voters decided on that in two thousand nine and it went out to vote because of a discussion. And the voter said, yes, we want TNT safe and sane fireworks in Lakeport and to be sold in Lakeport. It's obviously come up again because there are some people that are concerned. So we as a city council have the option to put it on uh up for a vote. But right now what we're hearing is that, you know, there's not that many people coming up saying that they don't want it. So if everyone here didn't want fireworks, then we would, it would be something we would consider. Putting out there, but that's not what we're seeing tonight. So, but that doesn't mean that the public, the citizens themselves can go ahead and do an initiative themselves. So that's what we're talking about tonight.
Understood. Any other questions of me?
You made mention of location and I just want to make sure I'm clear. When I read through the ordinance that was attached to the agenda, I didn't see anything. Uh, I could have missed it. That specifically talked about locations inside of Lakeport where safe and sane are restricted to. So is there any? I- i- is safe and sane allowed to be anywhere in the city of Lakeport?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I can answer.
I was going to say, I'm going to defer to Chief on that one.
Yes, so basically. Safe and sane are allowed on private property where they don't endanger a neighbor's property or another person. They're also allowed on any street or public way within the city. That doesn't otherwise violate another law. So for example, a uh. The side of a street where there's parking, where there's no cars, that's legal to set them up. A neighborhood cul-de-sac or out in front of your home where you're not impeding traffic, that's all legal. To set them off in those locations. Any, any big parking lots where they're publicly owned, they could set them off there. Um, unless there was other restrictions, a lot of the shopping centers. Don't allow it, but there are some that do say it's okay and the people can go there and set them off. So there's a lot of spots.
I have a, a final question. So um between the fire personnel and law enforcement. Uh, kind of to um Councilman Froyo's point, is, do you have enough staff to um? Control the city to help ensure that the safe and sane fireworks are not being set off in locations that are. Dangerous. For example, one year a while back. Um, I took the recommendation of, of an acquaintance. I went up on the sort of chopped off hill behind the hospice. Thrift store and um that was all dry grass coming up and people were up there setting off. What I assumed to be safe and sane fireworks and that didn't feel real safe to me. So I'm just curious, do you have the personnel to monitor that?
No, not sufficient. We, we have uh. The biggest problem is the illegal fireworks and like everywhere else in California, they're completely out of control. Completely. There's tons of them and we have to put. The majority of our staff on the Fourth of July, plus the mutual aid down here at the park to take care of the event. That's where. We'll have twenty five or thirty cops working down there to just keep the safety at that fireworks show event. Leaving a few people to work the rest of the balance of the city. And not only do we have fireworks calls, but we have other public safety calls for service. So. We try to be as responsive as we can to all the calls about fireworks. And there are calls that we can get to. There are places that we do patrol. And where we can, we can take action, but, but we can't cover it all. There's too much.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief?
To the, to the chief's point, to you, to your point, Madam Councilman. Madam Councilman, um. Coming from Southern California to this location and being told, that was one of the first things that I was told was we have fireworks here. And I will tell you, living in the mountains at fifty four hundred feet with, you know. Only three staffed fire stations uh within a ten mile radius. Um, Fourth of July and New Year's, extremely scary because guess what? We had a full on ban on all fireworks. Didn't stop safe and sane. It didn't stop the explosives. And if there's no other comments, now.
Thank you.
My seat.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
We did have an email that was sent to all council.
We did have an email. Let me see if I have it up. Um, Shyla Berry sent us an email. Um. Uh, she's emailing to express my support for continuing to give the communities nonprofit organizations the ability to sell and my family the right to buy and use state approved safe and sane. Fireworks each Fourth of July. The Lakeport voter spoke in two thousand nine with Measure C that state approved. Safe and sane fireworks are not the problem. Illegal, illegal fireworks are the problem. Please do not stop. The sale and use of safe and sane fireworks in the city of Lakeport. It is important to me and my family that our community can ta- continue to raise funds through the sale of safe and sane fireworks. Do we have anyone online?
None online.
Anyone else in the room? All right, we'll bring it back to council. Any? Further comments?
Well, the, the thing that always comes up. Well, what if, what if, what if? Um, I think everyone has heard of a plane crash. But if we need to go to Sacramento and then fly to Vegas or go to on a cruise down in Florida, we don't go, oh my God, the plane could crash. Um, you know, you can't always live in total fear. I think some of us. Did that for the last two and a half years. And I think it's just ridiculous. I, I had Lakeview Market over here starting in 1970 and I saw. Tens of thousands of people over the years going to Library Park. I was there for seven years. I've been up on the hill on 11th Street. For the last 47 years. And as far as a, a fire in a trash can, that's like a barbecue in a barbecue. Okay? We're not talking about a fire. Um, I just think that we, on that day, everybody knows there's fireworks. Everybody's ready. I mean, the neighbors are ready to put out a fire. The police are ready to put out a fire. The fire department's ready to put out a fire. They're looking for it. If we ban it like they do on the other side up on the North Shore, people bring all those illegal fireworks and they're shooting them off. And there's nobody over there. The whole county has like, I don't know, maybe 20 sheriffs and they're running around, you know, pulling their hair out. We know there's going to be fireworks. So everybody's on guard. And then they come and they clean them up the next day. I mean, yeah, and they're mixed in with the illegal. I kind of like the illegal as long as they don't start a fire, but, um, because they're way more expensive. But as far as I'm concerned, this constant living in fear because something might go wrong. I mean, we could have an asteroid come in and kill us all sometime. But are we going to be looking up at the sky all the time? I think we need to live our lives and celebrate the holiday, bring the business to town like we always have. And all these chicken littles that are worried about the sky falling, I think we need to put them on hold.
Aren't you guys glad you came tonight? Anyone else from council? Any action?
Yes, no. I appreciate your exuberance and I respectfully disagree with, uh, some of your assertions because I think. Thinking about what may occur is what planning is about, and that's why we're here. And I think that, I think this room is full of thoughtful individuals, thoughtful citizens. Who, um. Represent those that are going to be considering the harm that could come and are going to be careful. I'm not sure everyone. Uh. Who puts their hands on fireworks on Fourth of July is made up of that, but perhaps those that are can help to. Uh, educate and to, you know, make that role if we're going to have safe and sane fireworks that, um. It, your responsibility, your ethic spreads to others. I think that. You know, there's a difference between personal preference and then. Uh, as a council member and then considering what the community desires. My personal preference as an individual, I align with Supervisor Green. I think it's, um, crazy in the place that we live in this wildfire zone that we live in. In early July, when fire conditions are high, that we then. Um, on purpose. Play with fire, but that's just me, Kim Costa, as an individual. And I'm hearing loudly, you know, the, the reasons the community wants. And I, and again, I think that the people in this room represent. Responsible individuals who are going to handle their fireworks well. And hopefully maybe that's. Maybe that's the ticket and the best of all worlds is for the responsible citizens to help. Educate the others. And I kind of have a hard time. Well, I see the logic in if you ban it, you know, if you. Take away, if you make something illegal, then only, then only the illegal, um. Type will be available. To me, that's a little bit like terrorist threats. So I think that, um. You know, if we decide that it's unsafe for fireworks at any point in time, if this community decides that. Then as a community, we should be brave and just do that. But right now I don't hear the community saying that. And so I guess I would just appeal to, you know, all of the citizens here to use your good sense and pass that around to your neighbors so that we can. Continue to be safe and have what looks like a zero incident of fire, um. So far, but maybe we can continue that record if you can infect your, your friends and neighbors with a sense of responsibility on Fourth of July.
Anyone else?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Costa. I, I thought that was well put. I, I think that Mr. Revel's, uh, comment about. Um, putting the measure on the ballot, that, that getting it on the ballot isn't like it's going to happen right away anyway. And what I would say is that, um, you know, I, I hope that what, uh, Councilmember Costa said about the community taking more care. And if we don't have any incidents. Or very few or very small incidents, it, it seems like we could avoid that.
Thank you. I, I will say that at first, when I saw this, I thought fireworks equals fire and fire is bad. Um, after going to the fire station and talking to the staff there, um, talking with chief, uh, it seems like. A majority of the issues on the Fourth of July are not due to fireworks. A lot of it is just the influx of people. And I don't think any of us want to limit the amount of people that come in to try to make our community safer. So. Just putting that out there. At first I thought no fireworks, but after talking about the actual threat, um, I think it's, it's. We have done a good job to keep it to a minimum. And I want to continue that streak.
All right. Is there any action? Are we ready to move forward?
You're not required to do, um.
No.
Madam Mayor, just, I, just, uh, real quickly, there was one item that came up that, um. That, you know, I wanted to get council's position on. It seems like there was some discussion from Mr. Revel about. Uh, the possibility of imposing additional regulatory fee upon the sale of fireworks. Uh, you know, for, um, for the purpose of providing additional safety and enforcement, um, in, in talking with the city attorney. Uh, that is some, that's an action that probably would not require, uh, you know, a voter-initiated change to the ordinance. Uh, so I mean, that may be something that you want to consider if you want staff to research that a little further, uh, to look at it. Um, it's also worth noting that, uh. The TNT and the, um, the nonprofits can voluntarily impose that, uh, fee as well. Uh, it's not, not something that has to be through a regulatory fee process, um, but we can certainly bring more information back to the council if that's something that you're interested in.
Anyone?
I think that's a great idea. I, I mean, I really like the idea of, so if we're thinking about, well, how do we just increase safety instead of just. Uh, especially if, you know, fact versus fear, if the fact so far is saying it's, it's relatively safe, but we understand the risk. We had a wet. A wet, uh, winter, but I sit on the Risk Reduction Authority Board and, um, the, it. It's, um, the fire personnel are advising, get ready for a bad fire season because all of that wet weather. Brought a lot of fuel and when it dries out, it's going to be a high risk. So if we just recognize, uh, logically, there's always a risk. And if we want to just maintain safety so that we can continue to, um. Sell fireworks and support all of the activities that the community, uh, wishes to and. All of the things that were pointed out today, I think, uh, looking at ways to bring that extra support, hearing from, uh. Fire chief and from, uh, police chief that their, their. Personnel is not going to be able to do that. Whatever we can do to help, um, increase that safety, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And regarding my discussion with Mr. Revel. It's, it's certainly not any kind of a fee or a tax increase. It was. A proposal from him to voluntarily give us an amount of money. To help pay for extra enforcement.
I love that.
That was my understanding in the discussion with Mr. Revel.
Okay.
So it's, it's certainly not any kind of a increase of any surcharge. That the public would be paying. It's just, he used. That as, as an estimator to come up with an amount.
So it sounds like we definitely would like more information on that. Good, anything?
Sounds good.
Good. All right. Thanks everyone for contributing to that conversation. So we are going to back up in our agenda to our presentations. Do we have people out in the lobby that want to squeeze in here? Will you guys make sure that if someone? Okay. So there's some front row seats open.
I'm sure they're all going to stay for the road presentation.
Yeah, really.
Well done, Kevin. How are you going to stop them? Too late.
Yeah, too late.
Okay, there's empty seats up front. So let's have. Somebody's got to want to move up a little closer. Anybody? They're still coming. Okay. Who won the baseball game? Go girls. All right. So we have a special presentation, uh, to recognize the Clear Lake High School Varsity Football Team for their successful 2022 football season. The Cardinals won North Central League One and North Coast Section Division Seven Championships. And advanced to the NorCal Championships, which is the first time a Lake County team has made it that far. They won a school record 12 games along the way. All right, I'm going to come up front and, um, the community has chipped in to get these champions some, uh, championship rings. So we're going to be presenting certificate and their rings tonight. Who's going to help with the ring? All right.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's very clear. Mr. Revel is able to get people.
All right. Yeah. The Lakeport City Council Certificate of Achievement is hereby granted to the 2022 CLHS Varsity Football Team. In recognition of the 2022 Coastal Mountain League and North Coast Section Champions. All right. When you hear your name, come on up. Jake Soderquist. AJ Brew. Braden Greer. Hank Kenny Olenberger. Aiden Williamson. Jaden Vestal. Peyton Portlock. Jesse Hayes. Isaac Hasberg. Saul Reyes. Hayden Graham. Tony Hayes. Isaiah Reed. Liam Orr. Colton Mendonka. Fabian Marino. Axel Alvarez. Tony Grusalia. Wade Whitman Jr. Pedro Reposa Post. Sorry, Pedro Barbosa Post.
He has a new name.
Sloan. Ethan Masterson. Carson Wickstrom. Diego Brewster Ramirez. Bobby Brune. Michael Priest. Jay Spears. All right. I'm going to let the coaches take it from here. Yeah, probably. Here's.
Testing, testing. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank the city of Lakeport for, uh. Putting this together. Uh, I appreciate it. I know our kids will remember this in their lifetime, um, for such a, an achievement. Um, and for, I would like to thank, um, all the parents that contributed into purchasing the rings. They. So when I told the kids, uh, about having section championship rings, I didn't know that we would have to pay for it ourselves. So I thought the, the state did that. And then when I found out how much it would cost, I'm like, oh shit. I don't know how to do this. So, uh, luckily we have a very supportive community, which I, which is super awesome. So we got. We were able to raise like, for the total, the cost of the ring was almost $9,000. So. Luckily we have very supportive parents. I want to give a shout out to all like the, the people that donated in the community. Which is super awesome. I mean. They don't, you know, they're, they're not cheap. So, and, uh. I want to thank, uh, special to, uh, thank, uh, Kristen and Jason. So Jason, um. He, uh, he's like, well, it's going to take a while to accumulate this funding. So he, uh. Gladly stepped up and said, I could put it on my credit card. So we got the rings expedited and shipped to us and Kristen for helping me keep track of all the fundings that. I was just handing her money and I was like, hey, uh, what total are we up to now? And she's like, we need this much more. So. Thank you for that. And then. Lastly, I would like to, uh, present. Uh, Brian Sumter with his own ring. Uh, we would like to thank you for, uh. For your coverage of our football season. But I'm hoping that we could do this again next year.
How do, how's our chances?
Yeah, uh, let's go back to back. Uh, we have a pretty good chance, um, especially since the number. We have a pretty good chance, especially since the number one seed that we beat last season moved up a division. So I'm guessing we were, we're gonna be there again, so.
Wonderful.
For those Cardinals.
Coach, can I, is that, is that the ring that you're wearing right there on your finger? Can you hold that up for the rest of us to see?
Yeah, does everyone have their ring on? Alright!
Holy cow. Thank you.
Thank you. Did everyone get their pictures? No? Alright. Anyone else wanna come up? Any players?
Um, hello? Okay, we're good. Um, I'd like to thank all the coaches. They really helped us out, like, when we were struggling. Willets, that was definitely one of our struggle points. You know, we had a lot of ups and downs, but Cardinals, we never break. We just keep pushing. I like... I like to thank the O-line, you know, putting in the work in the trenches. We don't get the ball, but we do all the dirty work. Um, I'd like to thank Jake for scrambling sometimes. Missed a couple blocks, but it's okay, he's quick on his feet. Oh yeah, I'd like to give a big thanks to all the parents for showing up, supporting, and especially all the school.
Woo, nice job! Nice! Anyone else? Alright, guys, congratulations, we're really proud of you.
They can stay for the roads presentation.
We have a really good presentation on the roads. Anyone, roads?
I just wanna say, look what good comes out of when we invest in our youth, how it changes the entire community, just as one little last little zinger for you.
Like it, very good. About to get really lonely in here.
Victor's here, you are.
Alright. Let's see, back to council business. City manager, receive a presentation on the city's road management program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening again, Pillow Council members. We've tried and will continue to kind of add, once a month, kind of a civic engagement sort of presentation. We've done a couple things on some council and meeting, training-related stuff. But we also wanted to kind of open it up to, to general items that we get a lot of questions about at the staff level or out on, um, out in the public. So even though we have an empty room here tonight, we, you know, we're trying to put these things up online as well and continue to distribute these information out, you know, as a separate communication pieces and stuff. So this evening, we want to give a kind of a roads 101 overview. You know, kind of talking about some of the deeper components that go into trying to fund and maintain our road systems. Talk a little bit about our efforts to, to identify priorities and, and kind of looking, you know, into the future, being aggressive in grant-related app, um, applications and stuff and moving forward. So with that, I'll hand it over to our Public Works Director, Ron Ladd, who's gonna kind of conduct us through a presentation. And then certainly, we'll, you know, this is a citywide effort. We're all here to answer any questions that may come up from your council or the public in regards to the presentation.
Thank you, Kevin. Madam Mayor and Council, this is the Roads 101, and I wanna thank the people that hung out. Appreciate that.
Both of you.
There you go, George. I mean, the purpose of this presentation is to go over the roads in Lakeport and kind of give our strategy moving forward, some of the constraints we face and the struggles that we deal with. You know, I take calls regularly from people that are unhappy with the condition of their road. And, you know, and it is sincere when I tell them I share the frustration with them. I think there is a misconception with some people that we have this huge pot of money that we can do all kinds of things with, and we just choose not to fix the roads. And that could not be further from the truth. The majority of my time is pursuing funding to try to address the many issues we have on the roads. Now, with that being said, we have done some good work in the past, and, and I feel like we're making progress. So a little bit of overview of the road system in Lakeport, just, it's, it's a big overview. There are about 30 center lane miles of road in the city limits, so 60 lane miles. And those are broken up into 230 individual sections. And every few years, we work with Lake APC to do kind of an assessment of the roads, pavement management plan, that helps us to strategize and move forward. And they come out with a pavement condition index. That's basically your grade for the condition, the overall condition of your roads. And that's the PCI, and our PCI is floating between 40 and 41, which is not great. Ideally, we would like to see that up around 70. So I brought this map, there was just nowhere to set it up in the back. It's a bigger version of the one that's up there. Set it up here. You could take a look at it if you want to. That shows the progress that we've made on road projects, whether it was rehab or more detailed projects like, uh, you know, where we mill and overlay with asphalt, or some of them are complete reconstruction. So let's see, we'll go to... Can we go to the next one? This thing, click. We've tried to come up with, uh, with a three-pronged approach. And the first, the first part of that is, we wanna keep our good roads good. I got calls when we did the micro surface on Forbes Street that, hey, why are you, why do you got people out there working on Forbes Street? That road's not in bad shape, my road's falling apart. Well, they're right, Forbes Street is not in that bad a shape. And to do a crack seal and a micro surface on there like we did is a lot more cost-effective to do the maintenance as we go along to keep that good. And I have another slide coming up later in the, in the deck that'll show how we've done a good job keeping our good roads good. But then, you know, so we're gonna, we're trying to take one of those 230 segments of road that's good and prolong the life on it by doing the cost-effective micro surface crack seal kind of surface treatments that are available. And then the next step would be to take one of our arterials and our collectors that need a little more attention and try to get a segment of those done with, with, uh, with a bigger project, a more in-depth project of a mill and an overlay, or some of them even need a complete reconstruction down into the base. So when the road base gets degraded, when the water penetrates through these cracks and oxidation and things that happen to the pavement as they deteriorate, the base starts to pump up through the asphalt and it deteriorates. And that's when you get in a position of spending a lot of money to fix it, when you have to reconstruct down two feet or, or whatever it is. I mean, these are all kind of just generalizations that it seems like no two segments of road are exactly the same, or you're not gonna get exactly the same estimate for reconstruct or repair. There's a lot of things going on underground that affect the cost to address the issues on our, on our segments of roads. So in addition to the micro surface, we're trying to take a main arterial or collector and, and do a little bit bigger project there. And then finally, if there's anything left, and it seems to be the worst classification of roads that we have are in the residential and local areas. So we have been making progress on the residential and local areas. We've come up with a plan to kind of do a double chip seal. It's a little bit more than a micro surface. We would mill down a very thin layer and repave a very thin layer over the top of it, kind of add some aggregate on the top with the fog seal. And I'm sure you guys drive around all the time, you've seen, we did that project on 14th Orchid and Palm this year. And we have some plans to, to continue that so that we finally get some of the deteriorating roads in the, in the residential areas in the local roads, start, start bringing those back. So we could go to the next slide. And how we prioritize these, this is, this is the tricky part, is how to prioritize this. Number one, the number one thing we do to prioritize is we work very closely with Paul Harris, who has the stuff under the road, right? The last thing we wanna do is fix a road and then have to dig it up again. Or, you know, if he has to dig up a road anyway, it's just more cost-effective to make it a larger project and do it all together. So the number one thing that we use to prioritize our very limited road budget is to try to work with the underground utilities. And, and we've really been doing a good job of that, and we, I think that we really have a solid plan moving forward. So like I mentioned about Lake APC, they work with us, and they go into contract with a consultant to do our pavement management plan. And I believe, we just finished the update of the pavement management plan, and I believe we have the consultant coming in a few weeks to present the pavement management plan to council. So if you have a lot of technical questions about how they inspect the road and come up with the numbers, I mean, I can take my best crack at trying to answer those, but we will have the people that wrote the book on pavement inspection here. So we can really get into detail there, but it's an invaluable tool to prioritize. We use a program called Street Saber. It uses, you know, they plug in our budget numbers, they plug in our recent construction numbers. They use real data, it's, you know, local focus data that comes from Lakeport to generate these numbers and prioritize, uh, projects. And so, we could go to the next slide. I ran this report out of Street Saber, and this shows if council said, Ron, you have whatever you want to address the roads. Right now, today, if you just gave me a blank check, it would cost us $19 million to address the needs we have in the roads, and that would not bring our PCI to 100. I believe it brings us to about a 95, because, believe it or not, there are some roads that don't need anything necessarily today. It may be coming soon, but there are a few out there that are in really good shape. And so I just put that up as an example, and even with 9 million today, 19 million today, you can see that, you know, the costs keep coming every year. You still have roads deteriorating and have to, have to maintain. So I just, I ran that report to see, okay, if I just had whatever I want, how much would it cost? Well, it's $19 million is the answer. So if we could go to the next slide, this is the slide that shows that we're keeping the good roads good. So, and it's by functional class. The ones that are up there getting close to 70, they're not pushing up there though, but it's staying over 60 are some of our main arterials and collectors. That includes the Forbes Street micro surface that, you know, the surface treatment on that is included in this number, and that helped us on this number. And, and most definitely Main Street here, the, the recent paving project. That's, we're doing a good job over the last five years, keeping our good roads good. And then the collectors, they're down at about the average, right? They're running around 40. And the one that I mentioned earlier that really needs help is the, is the gold bar there, which is our residential and local roads that I think, you know, if, uh, if everything goes to plan, we will start making some good progress. And interestingly enough, in 2022, when we did 14th Orchid and Palm, you can see that that gave us a little spike on the gold roads there. So, I mean, we have a lot of bad roads in Lakeport in the residential and local areas. But, you know, if we can start getting little sections at a time like that, I think we can really start to see improvement. So if you wanna go to the next slide, this shows what we would need annually, what budget we would need annually to increase our PCI to 70, where all of our roads would be good in the good category, not very good, but they would be good. It would be about $22 million over 10 years to get that done. Now, the way it's broken out here with 2.1 million in the first year and two, you know, about 2 million flat in the second year, almost three months. So it seems like a dream, right, to ever get those kind of numbers to, to do everything we need to address. And they're a little high, and that's probably not realistic. We're working with 250 to 300,000 annually out of the general fund. However, we aggressively, and I mean, you could jump to the next slide now, that was just an example of what it would take to get it up there. We are aggressively pursue funding, and it's competitive funding. Often, it's even competitive internally, like the ARPA money that council decided to award to the roads to address, excuse me, South Main Street from First to Lakeport Boulevard. So we're gonna get that done. That's not part of the 250 or 300,000 general fund, and that's, what is it, Nick, 1.2? 1.2 million. So we're getting up there in the, in the kind of numbers it's talking about there. We have the RSTIP money for Lakeport Boulevard that's not general fund. And, you know, I don't have the last engineer's estimates on that, but that's gonna be a, a, a big number. So if we can continue to be successful to get funding, we can, you know, there, there is a real chance to make progress. And like I said, we try to team up with the underground utilities. Well, so that's what we have coming up on, on Lakeshore Boulevard, part of the the money that Paul got to do his large underground improvements. We're gonna get some new paving out of that as well. We're working with him on Lakeshore Boulevard, Martin Street. Other outside funding is CHRISA, I, I, forgive me for not remembering that acronym. It's coronavirus-related money that they decided to give us for paving, so I'll take it. Lakeport Boulevard, I mentioned, and then the local road that we're going to try to get done, like, much like we did on 14th Orchid and Palm this year, will be North Main Street from Clear Lake Avenue into the Del Lago area. And we can get that, you know, that's been in, in great need, and it has kind of a unique set of circumstances with the construction of that road. That would be a huge pill to swallow if we tried to reconstruct that completely. So we think it's a good candidate for the, the kind of thin overlay and double chip seal. The kind of thin overlay and double chip seal. And.
Ron, c- can I interrupt?
Yes, sir. I'm at questions now, so please.
No, I'm I didn't. I'm sorry, but just right on that one in the Del Lago there, I've I've done work in there and and it is pretty bad. And I've I've heard the residents complain a lot. When. As a guesstimate, when do you think that we're going to be able to do that? And will we be able to do that whole project inside Del Lago?
So I don't. Anticipate that we will have enough funding to do that entire section. If you're counting North Main, North Forbes, North High, Sixteenth, Fourteenth, Montana Vista. Via Del Lago, there will not be enough funding to do that in one crack. We're, I I I mean. Honestly, it looks like we're going to break that into three segments, that whole. Neighborhood there that would, you know, go over the next four to five years if we can continue to be successful in. Being awarded this competitive funding that, you know, we've had a pretty good track record of here in the. Not too distant past. So if we can continue to be. Successful there, then we'll have a little bit of extra road money when we're getting close to the end of the fiscal and and the plan is to really. You know, go after those local roads because, I mean, the charts speak for themselves. They're the ones that. Are are the lowest, they're the ones that are in the worst conditions and need the most attention, but we also have to keep. You know, the main street, the business districts, the access and egress in and out of town. Um, and it's been particularly around the schools and. You know, Greensayer and Locke is uh, I mean. They're in desperate need too, so I I'm happy that we are addressing those.
It's it's a constant puzzle. I feel like we we do really well with the resources we have, but I mean, the big key to that piece is as Ron has stated over. Uh, you know, a few times his presentation is staying aggressive on these other funding pieces. Um, I think the critical. Piece for uh, keeping it in the future, you know, to to be able to address more local roads is. Is continuing to finish these arterials. If we we get these arterials. In a place where we're not having to do full depth reclamation projects all the time on them. And we're getting to do more what we did on Forbes where we're we're. We're providing micro surface treatment to them, a much cost effective more that that does leave more resources. To really attack the local roadways. Um. You know, and that's always kind of the balancing piece because I mean, if you look at the, if you look at it by numbers, uh, you know, clearly the traffic volume is on the arterial and collector roads. By far, those are the ones that we all use. Um, and then you get on to the local roads and it it deteriorates really quickly. I mean, there's, we have a lot of areas. You know, I think, you know, you can go almost anywhere in town and somebody can make a very good case of why their road needs to be fixed. Um, so we we try and patch these things, but. Really, the long term effort is. Getting those arterial and collector roads into a position where we are only having to spend. Uh, you know, smaller resources on them for these uh, these micro surface treatments rather than the full depth reclamation. And then all of a sudden, there's a lot more money to put towards local roads. Um, but that's not going to happen this year. It's not going to happen next year or probably the year after that. It's a process, but um, as. As the map in the back shows and Ron's um, earlier uh piece shows, I mean, we've been making. Uh, a consistent concerted effort, uh, you know, in large part thanks to the citizens of Lakeport for the enactment of Measure Z. That's been a huge game changer for us to to continue to. Uh, to to make progress and start moving our slow climb up that PCR chart rather than going down. So it's it's going to take continued effort and um. You have our commitment that we're not going to let up off the gas um in regards to. Uh aggressively going after this, these uh funding opportunities. Uh, originally, we were looking at um. South Main Street being a three year project, breaking it into three different parts. The ARPA funding, I know there were other um, competing interests that we went to, but uh with council's decision. We're able to get that done in one swoop. That's that starts moving other projects up the ladder that much more quickly. So I mean, it's it's a continual process. Um, but uh, you what is it? Nine, nine uh, nine miles of roadway roughly?
Miles on there roughly.
Roughly one third of our of our center, our thirty miles of center line. Like that's, that's not bad since twenty fourteen. If we can keep that effort up. Um, we will continue to see. Uh, progress and it will allow us to get. Uh, deeper into those local roadways.
So. That. I know that on major roads, uh, we have different. Uh, metrics, you know, VMT and the other one uh, there's there's another one that they throw around all the time, but. When you're getting into into these back streets, I know we don't bring in. You know, like uh, traffic counters and all that kind of stuff, uh, the of the type that Dow and associates used to have where they put it in and they count, you know, there's like. Fifty thousand people going down Main Street and there's, you know, thirty-five thousand going down eleven, whatever it is. Oh, there it is, A A D T. Okay. Well, the question I was asking is. When it comes down to um. Your pavement management plan and. How do you decide? Because I mean, how many people go down, you know, spur, I mean, and then like I, I don't think I've been in Del Lago. You know, in fifty-three years, I think I've been in there three times and I, you know. Delivered meat packs and stuff all over Lakeport, but um, I don't go in there very often, but when someone asks you why um, they're not high on the list. Do you have some kind of parameters that you use to? Measure in some way, shape and form, or you just look at the, you know, the road index quality or how does that work?
We definitely look at the road index quality and I guess. I mean, one thing was we had this, it was kind of discretionary money through the CHRISA funding and we looked at. Greensayer and Locke for a couple of reasons. Number one, when. Lakeshore Boulevard flooded and that was the natural detour around on Lakeshore Boulevard, I think. That contributed to the. Degrading of the road significantly, but it is the the natural detour around Lakeshore and secondarily, it's also used. Uh, you know, that's the loop to drop the kids off at school. Um, they use Geiselman, they use Green, uh, they use Locke, they use Sayer, you know, they go through that neighborhood. So we looked at those and you know, the PCIs are awful on Greensayer and Locke, they're awful in. Del Lago, we felt with that route being the natural detour around on Lakeshore with. The addition of that's kind of the school route, you know. Uh, the bumpy pothole roads are also unsafe for pedestrians. So we thought. I I guess there are. You know, each little segment has its own. Reasons why they would get prioritized higher and, you know, I'm always happy to talk to someone and try to explain to them how we prioritized it.
Yeah, I mean, the same methodology was used. Um, I I can't recall when, maybe four or five years ago, uh, when we we did uh Fifth Street and S-step. Uh, a couple areas there that was recognized as, you know, the emergency. Uh, route access when Main Street's closed or something happened on Main Street, that's the emergency access piece there. Uh, for fire personnel, ambulances and other pieces like that. So I mean, we try and factor those into the decision. We do have some. General traffic count information on on some of these areas and that does get factored into it as well based on. You know, some of these residential areas. Um, but you know, the the other big one worth mentioning again is, you know, matching it up. Uh, with the utility funding uh pieces. I mean, that's why Ninth Street. Uh, First Street, why some of those um, you know, why we've been able to achieve some of the. The paving in there, we've already in there tearing the road up. There's an economies of scale that's um, that's brought in uh by matching those projects together. So. It's a puzzle. It's. You know, it.
Another priority, you know, one of the ways we prioritize North Main and kind of Sixteenth and the the area coming through. Del Lago is that is the the bike lanes go down to North Main in that area and. You know, the more pedestrians you could keep off of High Street kind of in the weird S curves there, the. The better off we're going to be and new flat pavement will have bike and pedestrian. Traffic going through the North Main. So, you know, safety is definitely. One of the consideration, you know, a top consideration on where we're going to spend the. The funds to improve the roads.
And and playing the grant game, you know, we we have our priorities. Um, but then when a grant becomes available. Um, but your first five projects don't qualify for that grant, then guess what? You move down to five because that's where. That's where you can put your grant dollars to to work. So. That's always a a piece as well. So, you know, some folks will say, hey, mine's been on number three for a long time. Well, you know, we've we've had to, we've had grant opportunities that have landed. Uh, in there that have made us go to, you know, maybe six or seven and down that list. So.
Yes, headquarters and Caltrans are tired of hearing from me. Because I'm bothering them all the time trying to get the funding for Lakeport.
Good job.
Then telling them it's not enough when they send me some.
Good answer. Any other question?
Um, I would bring up just one thing. I thought was interesting is we were at APC and um. Scott DeLeon, uh, they went through this and they said that in ten years, the county in this, in the city of Lakeport would be down around thirty, you know. Uh, based on the current analysis or whatever. Um, and Clear Lake was doing really well and he pointed out that the Caltrans project on twenty-nine, if he had the money that they did to finish the. Three or four miles that he could fix every single road. In Lake County, I don't know if that's true or not, but he he much to his chagrin, he was saying that and and when you see the. The constant inefficiencies and the lack of, you know, the way, I it's just, it makes me crazy being on that committee, absolutely. And I don't know if it's true or not, but they they go through a lot of money for right away and ARC studies and animals and, you know, all the other stuff and it's like, oh my god.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, I mean, that that. That project, I mean, that's. You know, a lot of that money is uh, you know, state funded, but there was a lot of local. Uh, monies that were dedicated as matched to that project. So I mean, yeah, it's. Those are the opportunity cost decisions that that you're you're constantly asked to make in these situations. Because it certainly doesn't get cheaper to do that road either.
Right. Anyone else? Anyone from the public?
Hello, my name's Dave Norris. I live on North Forbes Street. And uh, first I want to commend you. I'm sitting here listening to everything you're talking about. And uh, and I recognize it's a lot of work. To uh, get these kind of projects done. Um. My question is. Uh, when when you have a road that just needs um, pothole filling. Do you ever go beyond for general maintenance without it being a full scale project? Like uh, to grind small sections that are completely. Deteriorated.
Sure, we've done that in some areas.
Okay. Um, so. Uh, a number of years ago, uh, on North Forbes Street, uh, the city council approved uh, daycare on our street. Happens to be next door to me, which is wonderful, services a lot of people. And uh. Since that. That uh daycare has come in, we have a quite a bit more. Vehicle activity on this street in the morning and in the afternoon and they're breaking. Right in front of my house and. And I I brought it to your attention. So um, anyway, it it needs more than just a li- a few pothole. Repairs. You guys have been great. You come out after every storm. And patched up the holes, but it's gotten to the point where, and it's just a small section. That it could help it last till you get to the big projects. So I'm just wondering if rather than just a pothole fix, if it could be a small grind section and an overlay or.
I'm sure they'll take a look. Just to back up those, city council doesn't approve. Uh, childcare.
Well, it was for a a license to operate in a residential area.
At the time we did, we we don't have that authority anymore.
Can I say, I was on the planning commission when you, when you came in and and we approved that and I, I remember that you were very much against it.
Yeah.
And 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 I understand your reasons. My question for you now would be, has it been better than you hoped that it would be?
No.
Is for, no.
And the the problem really is, is my driveway is right next to the.
I've been out there.
We have. People delivering their kids parking in my driveway. Like right in front of my driveway on a regular basis. I have thousands of pictures.
I think that we can do something about that, but we'll talk later.
And the uh, the original person that. That started the daycare moved to Oregon or Washington. Somebody else moved into the house and continued a daycare there. So I don't know if. I don't know, you said they don't have to be licensed anymore.
Well, no, I didn't say that. I said, we don't oversee that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm not anti. I just want to be able to have.
Your driveway.
Road. I mean, when you hear the cars going by, it's just a real thumping sound. You know. And yeah. Little rocks are, they're flicking up and my next door neighbor parks his work truck there and he's got. The whole side of his truck has chips out of his paint from the rocks flying up. So it's just, anyway, mine's a very small project.
Is somebody putting pea gravel in in the potholes to to just get by? Because I've seen that happen and.
Well, they they've come by and put the cold patch in or even hot patch. I've seen every day, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody here who's going to defend. The condition of the Forbes roadway in that neighborhood. I mean, but it's.
Certainly not me.
It's, you know, it's uh, but I mean, I I think the good news is, you know, as as Ron outlined, I mean, that is an area that we are looking at right now. Uh, you know, kind of, we're looking at a kind of a three to five year process for that neighborhood, the North Main Street, Del Lago and uh, uh. North Forbes and the the interceding sections, well, Sixteenth, Fifteenth and Fourteenth. Fourteenth come across as well. I mean, so we we are looking at all of those pieces and uh, the the kind of process that we've used is we've, we we come in. And we do those digouts first and then uh, we we work closely with the the county on a chip sealing process. So I mean, those are all. Those are all factors that that get posted in, but um, yeah, I don't think there's anybody who's going to defend the current.
Okay, anyway, that was my question, whether. You're only able to do the pot filling or can you do a small section to grind it? Yeah, you know, you can look.
It could certainly be done, but I mean, you get to. When you start to work the math out. On a small pair, on a small repair like that and how much it costs or how long it's going to last, like. You know, at some point you do the benefit cost on that and if you waited another. Year and you could do the whole road on a better treatment where you didn't expend your funds on that. Small patch, I I mean, so we're dealing with such a shoestring budget that it's always a dance. And I mean, what we want to do is pave all the roads and make. Everyone. Happy and don't have chipped paint, but. Unfortunately, I mean, there's tough decisions constantly made.
I've been there.
The really good news though is with all that grant money and everything they've done, that those roads finally hit the radar because honestly, I didn't think they would ever. Pop up and they hit the radar and I went, oh my god, it's good news.
Anyway, thank you.
We're trying to get there.
Yeah. Anyone else from the public? Are you coming up, George? Okay.
Same neighborhood, bring it on.
Wait, wait, come up.
We, it was an appeal. From planning commission, they approved it and there was appeal to disapprove it, but that was past history. I think what. Uh, Dave is looking for may maybe is like a half a block. Grind and patch in that area.
Yeah.
Type thing versus doing all of the rest of the Forbes Street. And so that's where I think he's coming from. And the question I would have is if you did something like half a block type thing. Would that be our people that would do that or do you have to still contract out to an uh paving company to do that?
Well, I, that's a great question and the answer is it depends what you're going to do. The the general rule of thumb is if you grind over an inch.
Mm-hmm.
And put asphalt back down, it's no longer maintenance and it's a construction job. And it would have to go out to bid.
Okay.
And if it has to go out to bid, then. It's. You know, the price is quadruple once you have to go out to bid. And so that's what. I was attempting to explain if we could, you know, we could grind down. Less than an inch and put a thin layer of asphalt there and that would be considered maintenance. But the lifespan of that would be so incredibly short.
Yeah.
That I'm not sure that's the best way to expend the funds where if we can bank that money up to where we could do. A maintenance project on there with grinding an inch. Overlay it with asphalt, do a double chip seal, a micro surface, all at the same time, it's considered maintenance. And we wouldn't have to go on to bid like that and it would last much longer.
Okay, well, that was the, you know, I know there is a certain dollar amount that has to go out to the type thing and. And so that's why I was asking a question.
Thanks, George.
No problem.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone online? Here, we'll bring it back to council. Any other questions or comments?
I did, was your nineteen million dollar ask on there?
Oh, I mean, I kind of threw it in. I didn't seem like it.
Budget in a couple of weeks.
Fell a little flat, I guess. Great job, Ron. Fell a little flat, I guess. Great job, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, recruitment of an electrical mechanical technician, Kelly.
Yes. Um, good evening, council. Um, the city has one electrical mechanical technician, electrician for short. Um, and this employee plans to retire this year. Um, what we're asking the council tonight is to approve the recruitment, um, of another one. Uh, we don't usually like to come with staffing requests just before budget. Uh, because we would prefer that you approve them in the budget. But we are, we are asking, um, for permission for a half a per, we're, we're going to be asking in the budget for a half a person, a half of an EMT next year. Hopefully to align with that retirement so that there is cross training before the other person leaves. Um, but in order to do that, we need to start recruiting now. So we kind of wanted to forewarn you that this was what we're going to be asking. Um, if for some reason things fell apart and we couldn't put that position in the budget, we could always back out of it. But we wanted to ask you, um, at this meeting to approve the recruitment of that half of a position. Um, or it's, it's not a half, we're recruiting, we're recruiting a full person.
Giggling over there about a half a person.
We're broke.
Yeah, sorry. HR lingo. Um, so yeah, they, the, the, you know, the, the person would be slated to uh, replace the one that's leaving. So.
Okay.
So that's the request.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I'd add to, I mean, you know, there's, there's technical skills that you can find. But, uh, the reason this remains important is that so much of our system is knowledge based. And before that knowledge walks out the door with Ron Harpster, um, we, I think this is a really beneficial uh, way of making sure that, you know, we can try and get some crossover there and, um, and save ourselves some, uh, some heartache and probably, probably money in the future. If we can have just that half of year uh, where they can, they can work together. So that's really kind of, uh, you know, one of the other aspects at play. And as Kelly said, I mean, ideally we could convince Ron to stay two more months so that we could put this with the budget in there, but, uh, he wasn't willing to do that. So.
Rude.
I have a question just to clarify. So the person retiring is a, is a full-time position.
Yes.
And the ask is to bring on somebody for a, an, a half of an FTE.
Right. So next year, what you would have, the, the budget would reflect one and a half people because Ron, as he said, will leave at the half year mark. And then, so we'll have two people for a half of a year. And then the other one carries on.
So this is a new half FTE position that was being requested.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions?
Well, I would just say that it, it seems to make total sense to have somebody shadow. Um, before the retirement happens. Um, my only question is with the difficulty recruiting and hiring right now, uh, how do you see that process going and the timing lining up?
Um, I'm just really hopeful. I mean, I don't, I don't have, we don't have anybody lined up for this position. It was very hard to fill the first time. So, um,
Fingers.
I don't want to jinx it, but you know, it, this might be an ask that doesn't really come to fruition, but.
It's probably good to start early.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's exactly true.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public? Anyone online?
None online.
Okay. We'll bring it back to council for any final comments or motion.
Hearing none, uh, mecha motion. Uh, I move to direct staff to open a recruitment for an electrical mechanical technician or a EMT.
Second then.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kelly. You. All right. City Council Communications. Ron, anything else tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor Matina. I have nothing else to report. Oh, you know what? I could say one thing. Um, Public Works staff went to Poplin and got their fire training that's required, uh, for us to deploy our water tender for mutual aid for the fire districts within the county. So we are set to assist.
Nice. Chief?
Yes. One thing this coming Saturday, we're doing our semi-annual prescription drug take back, which, uh, a big part of the intent of that is to get dangerous medications off the street and out of homes that are not needed anymore. And, uh, so we'll be doing that for four hours from 10 to two on Saturday at the PD and we'll have a couple of other people there, the county tobacco waste program, cause they're into the assisting us with the, um, the vape devices and all that. And then the Safe RX will be there as well. And they provide education on opioids and Narcan as well. So if you know anybody that needs that service will be down there Saturday.
Perfect. Kelly?
Um, just a reminder that council wants to attend the employee appreciation barbecue. Having a little get together, just at the courtyard and, um, we're going to have minute to win at games and all kinds of good times. So that starts about 11:00, I think. Lunch in.
12:30.
What day is that?
12:30.
Friday.
This Friday. Okay. Nick.
Uh, nothing to report. Thank you.
Mel?
Nothing to report.
David?
Uh, just wanted to remind the council today was the last day to opt into the TIBA allergen, et cetera settlements. So that has been done by the city. So, uh, as we move forward, we'll figure out if we have critical mass, how many entities have opted in, uh, which will determine how much money we eventually get of those. So keep you posted.
Great. Kevin?
Are you going to cover our journey to Sacramento?
People, yeah, but.
Uh, no, just encourage you, uh, council members, if you can come out on Friday and, and join us at the employee appreciation. Um, looking for a couple, uh, council members to help, uh, us with, uh, serving at 12:30. So, um, uh, but if you, if you can't make that time, just come out whenever you can. Um, and then quickly I'll, and I'm sure Madam Mayor will cover it. Uh, both the mayor and I attended, uh, the joint meeting of, uh, Cal Cities and then CSAC, which is the County Statewide Association or California Statewide Association of Counties. Uh, one of the first times in a long time that the two, uh, entities met jointly in a special session, uh, to discuss, uh, the issues of homelessness. Um, we met up with, uh, both supervisors, Piska and, uh, and Sabatier there as well, as well as a staff member, Matthew Rothstein. Um, and heard some great presentations, um, some not so good presentations. Uh, but, uh, uh, really enjoyed, uh, hearing, uh, what some of the success stories, uh, that are coming out of, uh, other rural counties. Certainly some items we want to emulate. Um, but mainly I think overall the call was that, um, these one-time funding sources, although great, um, are not the permanent uh, solution to addressing this very complex issue. And, uh, I think that the call overall from both entities, both the counties and cities was, uh, to seek, uh, some permanent funding to address the homelessness crisis in the state.
Councilmember Costa?
Uh, so yeah, a couple of things. Uh, the Risk Reduction Authority Board met this week and, um, uh, Kevin also attends at you. Feel free to pipe up and correct me or something. I was very proud. I feel like I'm figuring out what they're doing, getting familiar. And then when I sit here thinking about how to tell you about it, I'm going to forget all of the acronyms and everything that, all those details. But there was a couple of interesting things. They are, uh, gearing up for, um, you know, concern for a significant fire season, just FYI because of the wet winter. Um, and there's a lot of other really great efforts to try to reduce the risk around the, this, the county, including the city. There's looking at a need for $30 million to remove the dead and dying trees. So there's just a lot of effort going on there. Um, also there's this interesting pilot project. Um, where a nonprofit is supplying free of cost water systems that take, um, sunshine and air and create water. And so they're doing, uh, throughout California, I think they're doing a thousand homes and they're seeking to identify um, at least 25 to 50 homes here in Lake County and possibly more. There was some discussion about how they're going to prioritize these homes, but to a certain extent, um, I think if, if interested persons were to call the contact number and have a discussion, there are some, uh, eligibility guidelines. But I think people from Lakeport could, uh, if there's a need, especially if, I don't know if anybody in Lakeport draws their water directly from the lake. But that was one of the concerns that, uh, so people with a need for an alternate water source could opt into this no cost, um, community drinking water program. So I have a flyer here. It looks like Kevin might have a flyer. So that was kind of interesting. And then there was also the Clean Water Committee. I don't remember the name of it exactly. Uh, there are a couple of cool projects going on there. One of them, if I remember correctly, it's a two-year study that is being funded, um, to look at m- many issues that have to do with the health of the water in the lake and the lakes, you can, uh, the lakes affect, uh, its health to persons. And that's going to include the algae blooms and such. And so they had, they, they did a nice presentation, very structured way of going about the study of collecting the data, of crunching the data and about making recommendations of what to do. So that's, that's happening there. Um, and then I guess the last thing I just wanted to mention was, uh, I noticed that in West Side Park area and Parkside, that red, bright red on the curbs. Thank you for that. That's, uh, really like red around all the fire hydrants. And I think it made a really good target for some of the parking vehicles because of really large SUV just cozied right up to the red on, on the way out. I, I noticed that. So putting the red on the, on the, on the curbs was a great first step. And I think, uh, as the season gets busier, we're going to have to think about if that's something that, you know, should be enforced in any way. But thank you for, um, making that happen at least.
Councilmember Parlet?
Um, I don't know, uh, David, if this is appropriate, but I, I'm going into summer where we're going to be throwing open our back windows and all that kind of stuff. And while my heater has been running, uh, most of the winter because of the cold months, there is incessant, I live up on the top of the hill and there's incessant all night barking dogs. Um, and I'm surprised if, if, uh, Mayor Matina hasn't heard it where she is. But I'm wondering, um, maybe I could talk to chief after the meeting on what, how to deal with that. Because, um, I'm afraid that when I, you know, when we get out of the heater running and the heater up, either that or I'm going to have to get some kind of white noise or waterfall noises or something, because it is out of control. Um, somewhere down on 18 or 19th. Well, it's right down the hill for me, but it is unbearable. Uh, my wife and I talk about it all the time, but anyway, that's another subject. The one thing I wanted to bring up is my favorite subject, the LTA subsidies. We got that last time and I just wanted to let you know, they have 12 routes. Um, three of them, um, actually managed to get more than four passengers per hour. Um, one of them gets six and one gets 10, and that brings the average subsidy down to $19.75. Only four of those routes, um, are under that and the other ones are over that. And I would just give you kind of, I was going to bring in a handout, but I didn't know if David would get upset. But the, um, subsidies on the other nine go from 23 to 26 to 32 to 44 to 46 to 55 to 92 to $125 subsidy per passenger. And nine of the routes have less than four per average hour. Uh, five have less than two, and they're actually thinking about getting rid of the one with $125 subsidy, thank God. And the 95, uh, $92 subsidy, they're going to three days a week. But if I'm not, i- isn't that part of SB one funding transit? Um, it's, it's kind of sad when I hear Ron over here squeaking and, and trying to get every dime he can out of every single thing. And we're giving people a $125 ride for a buck and a $92 ride for a buck and a 55 and a 46 and so on. Um, you know, is, and, and they don't have any car payment, any insurance. They don't have any, uh, you know, driver's license fee, all that stuff. It makes me crazy when I see that stuff. And I know we need to provide some kind of transit, but maybe it needs to be a lot more efficient. That's why they did the study. But it just made it even more apparent that this system is just like so, so expensive to run for such a small number of people per hour. But I, I think the council needs to know that. Cause I think this is, just seems to me an astronomical amount of money to get people around. And I told them, I said, man, we should just hire Ubers and be done with it. So anyway, that's my report.
Councilmember Disney?
Uh, I just wanted to say how, uh, much I appreciate, uh, Chief Rasmussen and the Fire Department uh, for taking the time to talk about the fireworks discussion, uh, at the Fire Department, all I did was walk through the open bay doors and kind of grab a, um, somebody that was there to talk to, and they talked with me for 45 minutes. It, it was, it was great to just have that kind of small town feel where I could email chief and he calls me back within 10 minutes. Um, so anyways, that, nothing really to report. Just want to be proud of our small town.
Proton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, a few things tonight. Um, one is we're, we're close, we're getting closer to, um, becoming televised on, uh, peg TV or council meetings. We're not quite there, aren't we? Okay. Well, and it has been the, the goalposts keep moving here, but I, we're, we're looking for, uh, some antiquated, uh, uh, parts apparently, but I, I thought, I'm sorry, Nick, we're, I thought we were closer than that. Um, well, I got my fingers crossed. The, uh, uh, city council meetings are televised on channel eight on MediaCom. Uh, and the board of supervisors are, are also on, we should also be, be there. So we're, we're working on that. It's, it's, it's getting closer. So, um, I'm going to give you a quick LMSA update. Um, I think we have, uh, uh, nine board members. Uh, recently we just picked up two. We picked up Stephanie Powers. Uh, she's the bank manager at West America. Is it West America? Is that the one next to Lincoln Leavitt? Yes. Yeah. She was actually here tonight and I was disappointed she left before I could give her a, a mention. And we picked up, um, a young woman Tiffany Landers. Uh, she works for California Accounting. And she's already assumed the role of, uh, treasurer for us. And so things are really working out. We've hired instead of an executive director, uh, we've, uh, hired Jen Richardson as an administrative assistant. And she's already hit the ground running and just doing a, a great job working with, uh, Tanya Silva. Um, we've, we've been limping along for many months since, um, the former executive director, um, went. So, um, uh, never want to pass an opportunity to embarrass your child. So I would like to tell everybody here tonight that this child over here, this teenager is, uh, is Victor, is my son. And, uh, I just wanted to bring him, I asked him a number of times if he would come to, to see what we're doing here and how this works. And he's said no. And this morning I asked him and he said, sure. So, uh, that's why he's here tonight. Now we're, we're glad, we're glad to have him. I told him he could play on his phone when he was completely bored. So. All right. So thanks for coming, Victor. And I'm proud to say that that's my son.
Right on. Thanks for joining us, Victor. Um, so just to add to what Kevin mentioned, we attended for the day, the city leader summit um, in Sacramento with Cal Cities and the joint meeting, but CSAC was great mostly, um, preventing, um, and reducing homelessness. Uh, the thing that was great is that the couple supervisors were there. Supervisor, um, Sabatier and Piska and kind of just opened the conversation of this, um, the money's a problem obviously, but also we kind of aren't going to solve it on our own and that we all need to work together to, um, come up with solutions. And then I ran into supervisor Sabatier again, um, this weekend, we, um, helped serve pasta dinner for Congressman Thompson and the conversation kind of kept going. So it's a good, it's always a good thing to open those conversations. So that's it. Any, anything else? Last chance?
Yes, the, the, the project that I mentioned with the, um, two-year grant funding of examining many things that go to the health of the lake. Um, that board is looking for representative. That board is looking for representatives from all of, from each of the cities and the county as well. So if anybody.
Yeah, and we're we'll we'll plan on putting that on on our communications feed as well. So thank you for that reminder. Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for joining us. Meeting's adjourned.